Okay, the first thing on the agenda is the Board of Committee appointments. We have recently, in that public session, because we're discussing individuals and the pluses and minuses of those individuals and that is a public affair, but we have come to conclusions on all of the appointments, and I will read them to you. For the Town School Budget Committee, Helen Porter has been reappointed, Michael Stevens has been reappointed, George Kirk has been reappointed, and Ralph Hodgman has been appointed to the committee. For the Planning Board, Charlie Bryant's open seat due to his death last year is being filled by Mary Menzies, who was an alternate. Jim Daly is being reappointed, Bruce Bronson is being reappointed, and Jim McMan the Third is being appointed to the alternate seat formerly held by Mary Menzies. The Opera House Management Commission, there's one vacancy, it's Dan Sterns, he's been reappointed to that. The Water and Light Commission, there's one vacancy, as Dan Moore currently has. The Board was in a bit of a quandary on this, not only because of Danny Moore and his many years with the commission, but because of the other applicants for that position, so we're holding off our decision for 30 days. In that 30 days, we're going to ask for a job description for the position, and we're going to ask the existing Board members and the Executive Director of Water and Light. And then we're going to interview all the applicants, and again, make a decision within 30 days. The Energy Conservation Commission had three vacancies, two vacancies and an alternate vacancy. Phil Gendrow and John Lofgren are being reappointed to the two positions, and the alternate position is remaining vacant. The Conservation Commission had two vacancies, or two positions that are being reappointed, that's Val Porson and Marcy Holson, and Marcy Horton, they're both being reappointed. Zoning Board of Adjustment had three vacancies, one is Jessica Dane, who has asked for reappointment, and we have given it to her. There is a vacancy in an alternate position, in Art Ty, his position is vacant, and he does not want to be reappointed. So to Art's position, we're appointing Ralph Hodgman, and to the alternate position, James McMahon III. The River District Development Commission has three vacancies, we've reappointed all three, Alicia Vasnak, Jim McMahon, and Brody Coop. That completes our list.
Yeah, we have, we, we, we need a motion to accept that.
A quick motion, we accept all the appointments, and, uh, we'll hang on. Second.
Oh, that's a favor.
Hi.
Oh, Karen. Next is the Town Managers' Report, Andrew.
So, just going to give a quick overview, financial overview of the first quarter for 2017. This year, the revenues so far were at 14 percent over a quarter of the year, with the understanding that we should be at 25 percent on both the revenues and the expenditures. I'll give a quick explanation. Revenues, generally speaking, reflect the time of billing and seasonality of revenue-generating activities, for example sewer bills that haven't gone out yet and a number of other items aren't invoiced until later in the year. And then expenditures, the cost, account splits currently are done on a semi-annual basis, so if you look over your information, you'll see some of the items might be at 59 percent instead of 25 percent, or might be somewhere at 30, 40 percent. Most of these, again, reflect seasonality and splits, so there are some activities that would be split between a sewer revenue fund and a general fund, and those actually aren't split in the accounting as well later in the year. There's other, other items like assault and use of time during the trip for highway that would affect them that too. And if you go to the bottom, through the look, you can see some of our enterprise funds, and they'll reflect the inverse of that, so for example, the sewer operating cost right now is only at 12 percent instead of, you know, close to 25, but that reflects, again, that some of those expenditures that are in the general fund haven't been allocated for that. But overall, everything looks like we're, we're doing well and within the budget.
I have two questions here. Under Advertising/Rec Association, its expenditures are at 89 percent?
Yeah, Karen's going to look at that one, I think that may be something else.
Is that a dues payment?
So Advertising/Rec Association, so this would be dues payments, it would be advertising for our various boards and commissions, and I imagine that there, either there's something that's not charged right on that, or we have something that's only once a year billed, similar to, like you look up at the work that's not correct, 59 percent, the reality we don't pay them, you know, a couple times a year.
So the budget amount just for the people here is $21,377, and they've already expended $19,343 through three months, so, yeah, and I think there's a dues payment that blows that right up.
Again, do.
Yeah, I think so, but I'm not sure. The other question I had was, the library is, has a 50 percent expenditure of three months?
So the library, what they'll do is they'll just issue a request for funds, and they issue a request for 50 percent of their funds, and then they'll likely give them the rest closer to the end of the year.
They're not leaving town, are they?
Not really. Is it possible to get this report with 16, so we can do a comparison to previous years from the future?
Yep.
Andrew, I have one other question here. We received the auditor's report, and I went through it, and there is no letter of exception this time, which is good, in other words, I didn't see anything on it. But do you maybe want to put this on the agenda for next time, if you, or you, the Chairman, consider putting it on the agenda just for a quick walkthrough?
Yeah.
This is the audit for 2015, so going back a year, but in reading it, there are some interesting parts to it.
Yes.
Okay, we now have the Health Officer's Report, that's you, Bill.
Yep. This, here's a copy for, um, it's all for the others. So I'm just going to read this out quickly. I try to do this once a quarter, and I think the last time I did it was in early December. As you know, I'm the new Health Officer here in town, as well as sitting on this committee. So, since December, I've had, totally, actually, I've been in this position now a year, and I think I've had 43 different situations that have come up. In the winter, it was a little bit slower, but between January and now, I've got to say this without tripping over, a bed bug infestation in a West Main Street apartment building was alerted by a medical facility treating a resident with bed bug rights. Alerted the Massachusetts building owner, also in contact with the local building manager, who said building has recently been treated by a certified pest control company, and I'm waiting for a final report, which is due at the end of this month. I asked them to send me something by the end of the year. I've been notified by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services of a petroleum spill at a Union Street business location, that's in process. I was notified by NHDES, again, of a rectified past oil spill at a South Street residence which has been rectified and approved, in other words, they cleaned it up. And I had another notification from DES of a rectified past oil spill at a Main Street business, and I had a fourth notification from them in the last three months of an approved water testing inspection of a Lisbon Road Route 302 business. I'm in an apartment complex north of Main Street which is experiencing sewer backup into the sinks, bathtubs, and toilets, particulate matter, not human waste. It's clear water with little plastic, it looks like plastic things floating in it. I had a sample which I submitted to a lab, and we checked it, and one of the straps already know what to do. They said, we don't take things like that, so now we've had another sample taken using one of their sample kits, and the lab results are pending. The owner of the building and the managers have been notified of this. The Highway Department went down and looked at their piping, it's not, it's not our piping, it's the piping that's on the grounds of the apartment complex. So that's basically up to this point what's happening, and we're right in the process of determining what we need to fix it. I'm following up on a complaint regarding accumulated garbage/trash at an Oak Hill Avenue residence. In the near future, I will seek approval of two new ordinances, canine feces as a public health hazard on our town-owned athletic fields. Let me tell you, the Athletic Director from the high school contacted me when we were ready to talk about this, it's currently being reviewed by Council, and it's being sort of reassigned just about a week. We have a situation where the kids have to go out on the athletic fields before they play a game and pick up dogs. There are people that are using the athletic fields because they're forced to let their dogs run. Feces carry a number of diseases, both that can hurt other dogs and animals as well as humans, and there's been a request made that we set up a series of fines and restrictions for the use of the athletic field. Police Chief and I are working on this currently, we're working on two parts of it, one is a trespassing component, and the other part is plans for allowing this to be on the ground. We're not talking about parks in general, we're just talking about the athletic fields within the parks, and we're talking about various kinds of fencing in addition to what's there already. So that will come about probably by early May, because we'd like to have this in place. We'll have a public meeting as well, because it's an ordinance, and I ask the other, excuse me, to select and to approve. The other ordinance is a dumpster, it's titled dumpsters, offensive matter, and standing water. We have one virus, two viruses that are currently up here during the summer, potentially up here, which is the West Nile Virus and the Eastern Eclonine Virus carried by our local mosquitoes. Between June and end of October, standing water, they can drop millions of eggs after the fourth day of one standing. I had had some dumpster issues this last summer with people allowing the dumpsters to be piled, the garbage bags to be piled up above the lids, and some of them are left open, and of course, that attracts bears. But the standing water issue is happening primarily with construction businesses, these are large ones that are uncovered, although we threw at the high school last summer, and I looked up there one Sunday morning walking our dog, and it was at least a good close to eight or nine inches of standing water because it rained during the summer, and those dumpsters were there all summer. I got the idea from the construction company that renovated the Social Security Building. I would notice at the end of the day, they would cover their dumpsters, so it's not a matter of not always being able to prevent water from getting inside, but clearly, we need to do some due diligence here in terms of not only the garbage that's going into dumpsters to make sure the lids can be covered over them, but also that they're covered. I've had great cooperation on the part of the dumpster owners that I've had to work in the past year, sometimes having to deal with repairs and sometimes with other kinds of garbage just dropping on the ground, and so this added component of standing water is sort of new, and that will be reviewed by Council as well. So sometime in the next couple, couple months, I believe, that's all I have.
As Milt said, these are being tweaked and added by Town Council, and then there will be public hearing, and eventually, the select will go on in order. So more to come on those, on those potential ordinances. Next on the agenda is some old business, we've talked to you last meeting, and probably several meetings, about the truck traffic on Mount Davidson Road, and Andrew has the report for us.
So what the traffic committee got together, we met to talk about this problem, and it seemed like the best solution would be to amend the traffic ordinance, the addendum section specifically highlights right now three streets where there's no crew trucking. The section reads that trucks exceeding three-ton gross vehicle weight or three or more axles are prohibited on roads with a sign marked "No Crew Trucking." Exclusion shall be trucks making a delivery to a homeowner business on a prohibited road. An empty recording list of all approved "No Crew Truck" signs and designated "No Crew Truck" streets are maintained at the Town Office and the Highway Department for public inspection. Currently, Herbert Lane, Grove Street, and South Street are on that list, and what we'd be proposing is to add, um, use this road with specific definition of between, I would say, road over on the other side closer to the, I think it's, one five meter state overpass.
Bronson.
Bronson, to the intersection with industrial drive, so what we'll do is have that changed for you and warn the next meeting as a public hearing for the project. If there's any questions, but a lot of public hearing.
So where is Bron, I thought it was serial.
Might actually be, oh, sure is up, I'm at all up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bronson is, yeah, down just, just before the overpass of, uh.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, so that covers most of, um, Useless Road.
That's right, yeah, and the hope is to end in being a shortcut there, large trucks and, you know.
Well, from what I understand, in talking to the police chief, this is, this is on the GPS system, and these guys are coming into, I mean, I shouldn't say guys, these truckers are coming into town, and their GPS system is because of, I think, my understanding is the intersection, Lincoln light situation that we had last year, this was a redirected route, so.
Well, it was, it's all a result of neighbor's concern.
Absolutely. That, that description you read of, you know, vehicles over three-ton or three axle aren't allowed to drive on the, that are posted with "No Crew Trucks."
That's right.
Is that a local ordinance, or is that a state ordinance? No Crew Truck means that, the same thing to everyone when they're driving.
As far as the definition?
Yeah.
I don't know if that definition comes from, say.
I mean, in other words, with someone from out of town driving through, know that "No Crew Truck" means I can't go through because I'm over three-ton.
What we've started working on is a sign package to go with it, and we got to look and see if the signs here will match it, but it's supposed to be able to educate the drivers, and then Chief is going to match it up with some enforcement, and we can also kind of notify some of the.
I mean, truck drivers may know that "No Crew Truck" means exactly that, which is fine, I just, I don't know if that's the case.
But the ordinance is ours.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
But, yeah, if it's a driving through.
What defines "No Crew Truck" sign, what it means.
Right, yeah, that's a question.
Okay, under new business, we have the San Souci contract, which you also dealt with.
So with San Souci contracts, the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration reviews our assessing contracts prior to the, the four assessors assessing them. This one they reviewed, I think it was probably about a month ago, and came up with some changes that they want. San Souci's offered to address each one of those points, there is one point which they basically said they couldn't address, and they gave a reason why. What I've done is sent that back to the New Hampshire Department of Revenue for a review to see if their recommendations meet, meet the state's requirements, and I have not heard back from them yet, and I think they can have a quick turnaround, but they've also had times when it's taken them two or three months, so I was hoping to have it back to them, and if they have any specific questions they want me to have addressed by the DRA prior.
No, in reviewing this, so George Sansui, or his company, addresses our utilities, because we have more than one assessment company, and so this, this contract has to do with our utilities, the Mordan plus the other facilities that are in town. And George is, or Sansui as a company is one of the very few, right?
There's only, there's only two.
He goes with utility.
Yeah, there's one that I know of, there's only two, there's one that's, I think, down in the Manchester area, but they aren't, that's not the unit that would cover Littleton from talking with the DRA about that. It sounds like they more exist for a very specific area, so really doesn't really need to.
So do we need to approve it?
You could, you could approve it based on satisfactory.
Do we need to approve it?
I think we'll take it.
Do we need a motion, is this a contingent motion?
You could, you could do that, if anybody wants to.
Is there a timing, is there a timing issue here, we need to approve it to get it moving, or are we waiting for more information?
Yeah, we're working with them right now anyways, they can pay, I'm sure they're going to be excited to have something.
Can you tell me again what we're waiting on?
So we're waiting on the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration to review the changes that they made to the contract?
Oh, I see that.
See if they meet their requirements.
So now you're saying, I should, yeah.
It would, you know, I guess if you made a motion.
Well, then we'll do it in more action at the end.
There you go.
You've got something else here that's not on our agenda.
Oh, so this is just an announcement, I was going to keep those under, um, upcoming meetings and other business.
Long path, oh, good.
Yeah, so just, I brought this up last meeting, we're having a Littleton Greenup Day, whatever we're calling it, on April 22nd, Saturday, there's going to be a public barbecue. We provide bags and gloves, if anybody wants to volunteer to pick up a road, come to the town office, highlight the street you're doing, sign up, and pick up some bags and gloves. We have blue bags, you can either leave them on the side of the road, or you can bring them to the transfer station, or to Remick Park on the 22nd for the community barbecue. There's also going to be Littleton businesses and organizations up at the park to talk about, you know, what, what kind of things they're doing, you know, Greenup Littleton. If you want to come out and see some of that, or participate, we appreciate it. And then, I do have a list of upcoming meetings every next, you know, of, of note beyond the regular.
Is that in our package anywhere?
Not, all, most of these are on the website, because they're just general things that happen all the time, like, for example, the Energy Conservation Committee, the Planning Board, the River District meeting. The, the next River District meeting on May 4th, there's going to be a presentation of the River District plans, so that'll be a good meeting for the public, and I'll just see where we're at with our file plans and what's expected in construction this year. And then also on Thursday, May 18th, at the Opera House, the Parks and Recreation will be holding a public forum on the Recreation Building in future recreation projects, and that'll be at the Opera House at 6:00 P.M.
Okay, there, there you go. That brings us to public camera, is there anyone who has any public camera?
Well, this upcoming meeting, are they not going to be posted? Are they going to be posted? It's Monday, you guys can hear, you know, you've got to take the work, so if you're here. But this upcoming meeting, are they going to be posted?
They're offered on the town website.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You've been over here just a while.
Yeah, that's where I got, I pulled them off.
Well, I'm just, sorry, I have a bit of pressure to the town manager, or to the chairman, whatever it is. It's so much you've been going on, you know, talking about the right to know laws, okay? It was a big thing this morning, you know, through the newspaper, through the radio, and so, and so, and so, and so, I know. Where I would like to know, and this is right related to the town manager, do you have any kind of format for the citizen, like Rudy Johnson, about this right to know laws? Or you're going to use, you know, your power to just, you know, try to avoid when somebody asks you a question about the right or not? Because I did some investigation, and what you did in my regard, when I sent you an email about the right to know, some information, and you said that you cannot give it to me, you asked Dratz over here, sending an email, you know, I mean, as a parakeet owl, they tell me that it doesn't matter what, whatever I ask to the town, and the RSA 91A, the town is going to supply me with all the information that I ask, without thought about, unless it's something private. I ask you guys, very, you know, polite, who are the attorney that take care of the town business, if you remember correctly? If you remember correctly. Now, according to Concord, you should have given me the information, which you didn't. But I'm gonna ask you again, Mr. like that, okay? It's right here, it's on paper. And I don't understand, I don't understand why, you know, it's so much friction. Everything that I ask it to, I don't gonna stop, I don't care what anybody says.
So if you wanted to respond to that.
Yes, yes, you could.
Yeah, so, I mean, in addition to that information, we've always been forthcoming with whatever it would be, assessing or anything like that. But I don't think there's been any friction either. I believe that after you requested the information about an attorney, all I did was ask which portion, like is there a certain type of law, what is it that you're looking at?
Yes.
We use, we use different attorneys, for example, for land use versus, say, some sort of ordinance violation versus, you know, a labor issue.
Yes, that was, you answered my request.
Right.
I don't ask you a particular attorney, stuff like that. Just wanna know, who's the employees that work for the town, little town, and we tax pay, we pay them? That's what I wanna know, the names. I know, I know, I know.
I could give you that right now. We do not employ an attorney at the town office.
Yes, you don't.
We have no attorney at the town office. We use contracted.
You contract, you contracted the attorney, but you know, it's like Wednesday, when you guys did whatever you did, right, in Superior Court. You contracted the attorney to represent you guys, right? And I would, I would like to know, who's this attorney that you pay with my money, with everybody's money? If it's passing. I don't wanna, you know, I do whatever you tell me, man.
I do have one question. We do have a prosecutor that works for the police department that handles criminal. Is that, is that the information?
The prosecutor is just in a court over here, okay? It's civilian court, civilian court, it's right here. I'm talking about what you did, you know, down in Concord, right, you know, that you have an attorney represented the town against some other people, you know, some entities, okay? My, I don't care about that. What I wanna know, I wanna know, who's the people, this attorney, these entities that they work for you guys and you guys pay them with my money? That's what I wanna know. Simple question without to go, you know, left, right, and stuff like that. It's a simple question. I get along with you and can I ask you something, but it's time. You know, this time you've really been giving my time. And you know, it's, if you think you're in the right, then you know, I think personally, it seems like you've been using a lot of power lately. I don't like that because you know, you're an employee of the town. That, that's it.
So like I said, we use multiple law firms and you're speaking about a specific case on Wednesday. So if you give me that, if you wanna come up with a, give me that.
No, no, no. That's, that's different. What I wanna know, who's this attorney that represented the town or little town? You guys, okay, the town. Not the citizen, the town. And you guys pay them with my money, with our money. That's what I wanna know.
I need to listen to Andrew, there are multiple attorneys.
I understand that, I understand, I understand. You're not the rookie. What do you think, you go everyone went to school?
That's the answer here.
No, no, that's not the answer. The answer, that's not the answer. The answer is that I asked a question if he's gonna buy the, buy the laws, RSA 91A, am I requesting? That's, that's the only thing I asked, that's all. I don't try to make it be that, it's a power score.
Right, that's what we did. We, we just said, he asked her who was the town attorney and the town, you want some, you know, specific case, sort of a case in the back of the class, saying, could you clarify which office that I could tell you which attorney it was?
So are you saying, Rudy, you just wanna know every attorney that the town's paying to do something?
It's, you know, if you need an attorney, if you need a civil attorney, you know, that's a, to go against Rudy Johnson, you're gonna argue somebody, right? You pay this guy, right, with my money, right? With our money, actually, right? And I would like to know, who's this people that they work for the town? It's a simple question, very simple question.
You can list the attorney.
He can give you a list of all attorneys that the town hires.
I will.
Period.
But, you know, it's.
Did you figure it out?
Whatever you're doing, you know, it's fine with me. It's important we come in together, it's all, that's about it.
Any other problem?
No, I got no problem, man. You've got problem, I got no problem.
Anybody else? Well?
Just a quick question about the dog feces thing. Is there a town ordinance on fines or anything right now for dog feces? Because it's pretty much carried across the town.
Yeah, there is, there is a current fine structure for like dropping it on the sidewalk out on the street. But it's, we're talking about changing the fines in those particular locations, talking about signage. And we're talking about deputizing a number of people, including the health officer's position, to issue summonses on the spot. But none of that's been finalized yet. So it's adding to the current ordinance that answered your question about.
We also seem to have no language that covers athletic fields.
We don't, sorry.
Not trying to plug that hole, though.
That's what we're trying.
Because I, I walk over to school board meetings every other Monday night and from my house, the school board meetings, the sidewalks, it's easy to all throw it. And that's right down on Oak Hill Avenue, from the school, right by the school.
Is there any other public comment, questions, remarks, statements? Being done, we move to board action. Now, do we need board action or are we waiting for more information on the San Souci contract?
In order to expedite, you could make a motion based on DRA approval, something that's dependent on that approval. If they come back any further change, you have to go back to the meeting.
Can I ask a question about that DRA approval? Is that, if they make a recommendation, do we have to accept their recommendation or is it not?
Well, that's a good question. We're political subdivision of the state. I have to look at specific law and see if we're required to.
How the Trumps, the Billups, they're up here.
I think the political question is, they were, have some helped us a couple of years ago. They rendered opinions which allowed us to make our decisions. Politically, it's probably not good to ignore what they say. But Mr. Sansui's company has been an outstanding reputable company for years. Yeah, I'm familiar with them. I'm not, I don't have those concerns, but I don't know if they're coming back with recommendations or requirements.
They named it as recommendations.
So we can, okay.
Yeah, you could do it.
So there is no board action, require anything on the agenda. That is the end of the agenda for the meeting. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Really not?
Well, we do have to go into non-public, don't we? Have to adjourn? No, we don't. We don't, we're going to non-public. We need to go into non-public under RSA 91-832K, which is dismissal, promotion, or compensation of a public employee, the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of charges against said employee, a less than employee. Does it right to a public meeting to request the meeting be open? I need a motion to go into non-public session.
Can I interrupt for a minute? Can I, is there a part for other business?
Pardon?
Is there a part in this meeting for other business?
Yes, we went through it. You wanted me to reopen public comment?
Well, I just have a, well, I'll introduce myself. I'm George Austin, I'm Austin Construction. And I built the Ice Cream Bridge down here. And I'm, my patience has run out on trying to get the job closed out. And I, I'm running out, I'm running out of patience to get paid up. It's been five months.
I'm sorry, which bridge do I have to open this up?
The Ice Cream Bridge right here on Ice Cream Bridge. Yeah, we have, there's a number of, updating that we're waiting on review from our HGB.
So you, you guys made any communication already?
Emails, we haven't done that, we've sent that meeting, but just, really, if you want to just make an appointment and kind of, and see me, we can go over the status. It'll be the best, nothing. I know that we had some stuff out for review, but it's more, I think, contractual issue rather than dealing with it in the public meeting.
Yeah, but the, the problem I have is I ended up having to do the paperwork for the engineers in order to force this action. And it's already been three weeks after me waiting for five months for that paperwork from the engineers and the town.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we try to set up a time before the end of the week for us to get together and just review what is still pending, which charges that are out there and what, what status is with the information that has been submitted to the engineer? And just sit down and go over it.
Well, my, my question is, why, why has the engineer been allowed to just set on this for five months?
I, I'll wanna look at that and see. I don't know that they have. I know that there's been information going back and forth. There is a question on some items.
None of that's been coming back.
It would be better for us to talk about it in a, in a business meeting rather than here, if you go over it.
Yeah, but the time is long ago, not, not now.
Right. You, you haven't made an appointment to come to my office? We should do that and go over it there. That's all I have to say about it right now, so.
Why don't we, as a, as a, ask the town manager to do, get this resolved as quickly as we can? And hopefully that will help you. I would say if this doesn't, get back. I'll entertain a, we're, we're, we made a motion to go into non-public.
Make the motion?
We've already did.
Already did?
Yeah, okay.
I have a vote by vote called the Milk Rats on.
I'll go Rossini.
Sweet eye.
You wanna take a two minute break?
Take a two minute break.